Call the meeting to order. It looks to me like everyone is present. Let's all stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any changes to the agenda?
We have one addition, and that would be for E, I believe it's, or eight, ten, E10, and that is the hiring of Haley Hungerholt for junior high volleyball.
Okay.
Anything else? Yeah, I'd like to poll number eight under E personnel. Number five, I'd like to vote on that separately, please.
Do you want to poll E5 and eight?
E5, eight.
Under the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Agenda?
Okay, wait, no.
Eight, E5.
Eight, E5.
Oh, there you go.
Eight, E5.
Okay.
So we're voting separately on that.
Oh, thanks, Lynn.
Thanks.
Yes, okay.
So will that become, then, nine? I don't know this discussion, I am.
Could we just put it after Haley? Is where you had to approve her?
Good one.
Well, he doesn't want it as a part of the consent agenda. He wants it off.
Right. We'll put it under, uh, 10.
Yeah, it's got to be a clarada.
F.
10F?
10F.
If not, is there a motion to approve those changes?
I'll make a motion to approve the changes to the agenda.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Deb. Any other discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we need a motion to approve the agenda. Almost.
Go ahead, Cassidy.
I'll motion to approve the agenda. Okay, Cassidy, is there a second?
Second.
Tim, thanks, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right. We have a little bit of public here tonight. I'd like to welcome you all. Are there anyone that wants to say anything at all? Okay, just checking.
I'll check. Have you been talking?
Sure, go ahead.
Well, I had about 45 minutes worth of stuff prepared.
This is Kevin Johnson, by the way.
But I left it at all.
If people don't know.
No, I was gonna, actually, I was gonna prepare some stuff for tonight. And it's just, I guess my concern is the, you know, the mask stuff. I think that's what probably most of the people in the room. And there's tons of, you know, I didn't do statistical stuff because, to be honest, you skew the stats how you want to skew the stats, and even make it look good or bad, whichever way it is. You know, we talked about masks being great for kids, we talked about masks being bad for kids. I think we can see both sides of it. And I think there's probably, sadly enough, some truth to both sides of it. But it's just hard to make those decisions for other people. So I guess my thought, and I'm speaking for me, but I'm speaking for some people I've talked to that are concerned with the rooms in the room, but other people, and I think a lot of people's thought is, let the parents decide for their children if they have the ability. I realize under 12 can't be vaccinated, so maybe that's treated differently by the school. I don't know how to, I don't know the right way to do it, I don't know the right way to do any of it. I don't think any of us who got over trudging along through this. But I just feel, I've had some people say, well, we might lose students if we don't mask. Well, we might lose students if we do mask. We have to look at both sides of this, and I think we have to let the parent who obviously cares the most about their child make some of that decision. And I would hate to see someone that was led, you know, some people, some kids, younger kids got vaccinated because they were under the impression at the time that vaccinated kids wouldn't have to mask, and won't have to quarantine and those types of things. I would hate that person to get vaccinated and then say, well, you still gotta mask. Because I'm assuming, and again, I'm speaking for myself, not others, but I'm assuming that if they did that vaccination, it was with a lot of thought and a lot of concern and all kinds of emotions probably go along with vaccinating a child. But they did it for the means to be the better, you know, to do the best job for that student and for the school, you know, is that, is that far as that goes. So I guess I won't sit and blabber forever, but I just think it's very important, in my opinion, and those of several people I've talked to, is let the parent decide, let it be up to them to decide if they mask or don't mask. I have no problem with people that want a mask. That's, again, that's their deal, but I hate to be blanketed. And I think that's what we've done in, you know, I don't want to make this political, but I mean, politically, everything's a blanket. You know, if one person needs it, we give it to somebody, we can't blanket this. We have to treat people as individuals, let the kids and their parents make the best decision for them, and let them, let us move forward and get through this crazy battle we're fighting with this pandemic that just kind of keeps coming in new waves. But it don't always gonna end. This, we could be facing this again next fall. God, hopefully we don't, but we could. So I think we've got to make some things. I always err probably on the side of not being the most conservative. I think we do what we feel is right for us, and we deal with, if there are any consequences down the road, we deal with them. That's my two cents.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much. Moving on in the agenda, we've got some good things that we want to recognize people for. Want to thank Nick Sweeney for putting Australian timber oil on the Cardinal statue outside the pool. This will help protect it from the elements and to prevent it from drying out and cracking. So we thank, thank Nick for that. Thank you to Haley Hungerholt for volunteering all summer long to open the gym and help in both volleyball and girls' basketball. Awesome to see you giving back to the current students, so we appreciate that. Thank you to Nate Fraser for spraying the weeds and cleaning up, cleaning up the elementary baseball field. It does look very nice. All your efforts have not gone unnoticed, and the students and staff appreciate that very much. Nurse Emily Brum has secured two mannequins from RCTC for free use in our CNA program. This gives the school district over $6,000 in value, so thanks to Emily. And thank you to our Cardinal kids and Cardinal care workers. They have worked hard over the summer supporting our smallest students, so we appreciate all those people. Is there anything else that we forgot along those lines that anybody can think of? Okay, very good. Moving on to the consent agenda. For those of you that aren't normally at school board meetings, I like to just go through these items and ask if there's any questions of the board members and so forth. So just bear with us as we go through, go through that. So we've, I assume that we've all read our meeting notes from the last month's meeting. Treasurers report, are there anything that, Teresa, you need to add anything there?
Yeah, going through the check register, we had to, we pulled check 57781 due to some miscommunication. We have reissued it under the check 57818. However, we still need to do a little more investigating, so if it comes that we need to have it paid, we will pay that as a hand pay in between bills. And then the student activity account, we had one that was in the negative. We are gonna do, we're guessing we're okay, but we're gonna be double checking further into that with Kristi tomorrow to make sure everything balances out since Fund 21 can't be in the negative.
Okay, thanks, Teresa. There are no fundraisers, no donations, under personnel. We have a resignation of Kim Runde in Cardinal Care. Resignation of Hannah Maloon from kitchen assistant. Resignation of Lauren Poole as the head volleyball coach, which we never really got started. Resignation of Madison Smith as a para. Any questions about any of those? Okay, we're approving the hiring of, I'm sorry, hiring of Angie Olson as assistant JV volleyball coach. Approval of hiring of Barbie Tiller, assistant cheerleading coach. Approval of the following job descriptions, coach and student services advisor. We saw those, we got those in our emails. Approval of fall trap coaches, Gary Schaefer as the head coach, Tim Lewison, Mike Main, Brenda Arndorf, Chad Knod, Dan Lewis, Ned Kiefer, and Mike Welsh. And approval of the health insurance renewal and changes to authorize representatives of first aid banks to remove Sarah and add Kristi, who is our new business manager, by the way. Welcome, Kristi. And to keep Tiffany Lewison and Jennifer Johnson on as the signers. So are there any questions on any of that?
I had a.
You gotta remember, aren't we doing Haley Hungerholt in, under that too, Dave?
We put her in 10E, 10F, right after Haley.
That was Lindsey.
That was Lindsey.
Haley should be E10, or, A, E10.
My mistake, my mistake, my mistake. Okay, so Haley is, okay, so approve Haley Hungerholt as the junior high volleyball. Okay, thank you.
I noticed in a couple of the job descriptions for the head coach, on page 13, we need to change Houston to Leroy, and on 14, Houston Board to the Leroy Osterlander Education Board.
I saw that, too.
What are you looking at me for?
She doesn't make any sense.
You can thank Trevor in here for that one.
Not me. That's Trevor's fault.
The last school board meeting, it was my turn.
So obviously, they didn't reinvent the wheel.
No.
We couldn't find any anywhere, so.
Okay, very good. Any other, anything else, other corrections? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thanks, Teresa. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Pat. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. All right, so we cut out, quote, a bit of the agenda with one motion. Okay, so now we're looking at policy review. So first of all, we'll just do a motion on the second reading of 401, 402, 403, 404, and 405. So are there any comments the policy committee would like to make on any of those?
We had no changes to any of those.
Okay. If not, is there a motion to approve the second reading of those policies?
I'll make the motion to approve the second reading of 401, 402, 403, 404, 405, and that's all of them.
Okay, thanks, Teresa. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Deb. Any other discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, now we're looking at the first reading of 406, 407, 408, 409, and 412.
The only change we had on 409, we had to enter in a timeframe. Previously, we went with what we had previously was the two years. Otherwise, everything else stayed the same.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, is there a motion to approve the first reading of those policies?
I'll make the motion to approve the first reading of 406, 407, 408, 409, and 412.
Okay, thanks, Teresa. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Cassidy. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Now we're down to the handbooks. So we have the second reading of the student handbook, activities handbook, faculty handbook, iPad laptop and bullying policies, and paraprofessional handbook. Okay, let's take one motion and do all those. So is there any questions?
There were a couple of changes.
Yeah.
Yeah. In the student handbooks, under the elementary and middle school, high school, we added a clause that we are not a distance learning school district. That, you know, if, if you're, if the student needs to quarantine, then yes, we will accommodate for that, but we are not going to offer online full-time learning. We just don't have the capability to do that.
Okay.
And then in the bullying policy, we added in the proper procedure, how to report an incident, who to report it to, and the form is also in there as well.
Okay.
And then also on the, I'm sorry, were you finished?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. On the middle school, high school one, it showed like the class hours, and then it said on Wednesdays, and I felt that it was missing the morning, like, there was a, there was a section missing there of what did they do for first, second, third periods? And so Nikki Bergen was gonna go in and add that in. So like, it's here, here's what we do Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and then over here, it was on Wednesdays because there's special time to meet as a class, there's special time for when, and then they said how fourth, sixth, seventh, eighth, or fifth, sixth, and seventh period were gonna be, but they didn't list the morning ones, so she was just gonna add that in.
Okay, does anyone know for sure that that got done?
She was working on it when I was talking.
Well, it must've been a typo because that used to be in there because all it is is shortened up periods.
Right.
So one, two, and three just fit in the morning, the same, instead of 51 minutes or 20 something minutes. So for some reason.
But it just wasn't written in there.
Yeah, one, two, and three were missing, so I think it was just omitted or.
She was putting it in when I walked on.
She sent it to us this afternoon. I haven't opened it yet, but I bet. It's the corrected version, I guess.
Okay, very good. Anything else? I mean, we talked about some of these changes at the last meeting, after the first reading, so. Okay, if not, could I get a motion to approve those handbooks? Student handbook, activities, faculty, iPad laptop bullying, and paraprofessional.
I'll make the motion to approve the second reading of the 2021 student handbook, activity book, faculty book, iPad laptop policies, bullying policy, and the paraprofessional handbook.
Okay, thanks, Teresa. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Deb. Any other questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, just need to approve a resolution for a membership in the state high school league.
So with that one, each year, school districts who want to be part of the Minnesota State High School League, and you guys have for ever, as long as I can recall, even in high school, I believe, you guys have been a member of the Minnesota State High School League. Our representative is Pat, Director Arndorf, on our, on our board, and we have him sign the agreement to become members of the state organization. So every year, we need to do it if you so choose.
Okay. I only gave him a lot of money.
We keep giving him money when you do this, too, just so you know.
Any questions or discussion? Pretty straightforward. Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution for a membership into the Minnesota State High School League.
Thank you, Pat. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Tim. Any other discussion? If not, I suppose this would be a roll call vote. Tim?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
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 Okay, very good. Okay, discussion approval of the non-affiliated pay scale for Cardinal kids and pool workers, additional actions to occur at future meetings.
So Jen's been working on this for a while.
Yep. So right when I started here in July, I didn't know there wasn't any sort of non-affiliated union or handbook or policies, procedures, or anything to not only support those staff members, but protect them and the district. And so it took me quite a few months to kind of figure that out, but in January and February, I started talking to our community at large, meaning our, our staff members who are, who would fit into that group, but also the board. And so I kind of had a goal, my own goal, to start really hammering this down in July and August. So once I started peeling back that onion, as you know, it gets kind of messy and kind of crazy. So some of these folks, mind you, have not had raises or anything else for seven, eight, nine, 10 years. Many of them don't have any leave language or legal language to fall back on in terms of being an employee here. And I think I know my board well enough to know that I need to move forward in an ethical way of trying to support these staff members with something. And so I wanted to start with our Cardinal kids, care, and pool workers. And so what I've sent to the school board, just so the community at large knows this too, is basically a cost of living spreadsheet, but also utilizing some of the current dollars that are being used for our staff members to at least get a baseline of where we can begin the process of supporting these staff. So what was in front of you, I'm trying to get up on my phone and I have no service, so I apologize.
Did I just listen to this?
Yes, thank you, Deb. So this is what I would like to propose as a baseline. Now, again, it's somewhere for us to start. I have reached out to our non-certified board negotiators, so that's Director Lewison and Director Rayburn, to help me out to begin this process of research and design for our folks. So it's gonna be somewhat of a nightmare in the beginning, but it always is when you start from scratch. But I think at the end, you know, again, they have done so much for our community and our district, a lot of these non-affiliated staff people have, and we need to recognize them somehow. And so this is where we're starting. So any support from the board would be, we're very much thanked, so.
I just wanted a clarification. The steps are regarding numbers of years working.
Correct.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
So when, when, if we decide to implement this, some people will immediately be on level five, right? Not everybody's gonna start at one, and no.
Exactly.
So wherever, as many years as they've worked in the program, that's where they're gonna start.
Correct.
I just wanted to be sure about that.
Yep.
Okay.
And the reason why I'm using COLAR, cost of living, is I need to start somewhere with a percentage. I couldn't just randomly say, you know, 10%, 20%, 3%. It was like, no, this is pretty common in terms of business language, so that's where that came from. Everybody wants to.
Okay.
Going through the email, you said that you'd wanted to discuss retroactive back pay. What are you thinking?
Yep, so I threw out to the school board, just so the community knows, something to think about and talk about tonight with this new handbook, new non-affiliated handbook. You know, again, we have very inconsistent salaries, no language. We have some, some folks have been working, you know, two years and one month. Somebody's working two years and two months and getting less pay, you know, so it's very inconsistent. So I was thinking, to be fair, if there is such a thing, I'm not sure, I'm trying to figure it out myself, but to be fair, there's two trains of thought that we can maybe fall back on. The first one is, if we want to be consistent with maybe my time here, to go back two years in retro pay, for those who started, you know, then, so that would've been July of last year. Or the other train of thought is, well, since Jen just started working on this in July of this year of 2021, that would be my other train of thought, that she had a year under her belt, because it's something historically we can remember, and we have data for, you know, my emails, things like that, that show things like, oh, this is when we started talking about it, so we can always go back to it. So those are the two kind of thoughts I'm working with right now. Both easy to do. It's a lot easier for this July, for our business manager, to go back and retro, just to July, and that, I think I'm, I want to steer you guys more in that direction, just because managerial-wise, that's easier, not to say it's right, but it's definitely easier. And I don't have data from prior to me, or even that first year I'm here. Now, this is all new, so I don't have as much data as I do now. So, but those are the two reasons I'm thinking, if that makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
And then you can blame me if it all goes to hell.
Well, we blame you for everything, anyway.
I know. It's all right.
So that makes sense to me. I mean, I just appreciate Jen taking the time to, after she noticed this, to do something about it, so.
Absolutely.
That's, that's great. And I think, in my opinion, we should, I think, part of the motion be, that it should be retroactive to July 1st, 21.
Okay.
Like you suggested.
I agree.
This year.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Oh, man. Otherwise, is there a motion to approve? What are we approving?
Non-affiliated.
Just the, non-affiliated for the Cardinal kids and pool workers.
For now. I'll keep coming forward. I want to meet with, of course, Tim and Deb first, and we'll kind of talk through things, hash things through. We're looking at language right now, some samples and examples, and we'll be coming to you guys with everything, so we just need some time.
Okay. Someone like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we incorporate this pay scale for the non-affiliated, oh, for, okay, let's start again. I would like to make a motion of the non-affiliated pay scale, that'll be accept the non-affiliated pay scale for the Cardinal kids and care and the pool workers, retroactive to July 1, 2021. Is that right, guys?
Yep.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that, Dave.
Okay, is there any other discussion or questions regarding that? Okay, hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll abstain.
Okay, motion carried. One abstain. Did you get that, Tim? Okay. All right. We're coming up to the discussion of pandemic plan, or why some of you people are here. I feel kind of strongly about this myself, so I really never pushed my weight around as a chairman, but I'm going to a little bit tonight, this thing, because I have a motion that I've written out that I want you guys to be able to have a copy of, and I will read this. So I make a motion that Leroy Osterlander School District will be holding in-person classes for our students five days per week for the 2021-2022 school year. The district will not require students or staff to wear masks, vaccinations for COVID-19, testing for COVID-19, contact tracing, or mandatory quarantines of symptom-free individuals. We respect the parents and employees of this district and believe they should make their own decisions regarding the health of themselves and their families. However, the district will require that if students or staff have cold or flu symptoms, that they stay home until they are symptom-free for at least 24 hours before returning to school. During this time, a student will receive their homework assignments from their teachers and may have the opportunity to observe their classes online when they are in session. The administration will be responsible to prevent any discrimination of anyone who chooses to wear a mask. So there's the motion, and I'm wondering if I can get a second to that.
I'll second it.
Let's discuss.
Thanks, Tim.
I have a couple of questions.
That's right.
Let's discuss.
Okay, a second, we have a motion, a second, now it's time for discussion.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Just getting this right now, has, I don't know exactly what MDE is requiring us to do or MDH, has this been looked at by Morgan to make sure that we're covered? Don't get me wrong, I think the mask should be parent.
No, it has not been. There are no requirements or mandates.
There's nothing from the state at all? Okay.
We had, we had this sample resolution. Did you get a chance to see that?
Yep, from MSBA, yeah.
Yeah. Which is recommending that we, as a school board, make a statement.
Well, my feeling on it, as long as I made the motion, is that I just feel it's kind of common sense, allowing the parents to have their control over what their kids are wearing, as far as a mask, whether they're vaccinated, whether, you know, those types of things. As far as the conditions in the school, I think that kids need oxygen. When they're wearing a mask all day long, they're depriving themselves of oxygen, so that does not bode well for a good learning situation, in my opinion. I have a friend who's a teacher, actually, in Grand Meadow, who has said that the kids, especially the younger kids, are developing slowly in their speech and so forth, because they aren't seeing those teachers that are teaching them, learning to pronounce the words correctly, or enunciate correctly. And as far as the contract tracing piece, we did that last year, and it caused more problems than it did good, because we had 40 people out of the building, and not a one of them ever got sick. So, it was really, in my opinion, this is all my opinion, kind of a waste of time. And when it comes to oxygen level, I've read that, that, I think the oxygen, the air we breathe is like, what, 20 and a half percent, or 21% or something like that? And when they're rebreathing from a mask, it drops it down to about 18%. So, might not seem like a lot, but it's, the amount of oxygen that they're taking in, it's quite a chunk that they're not getting back, so. That's my spiel on that.
All right. So, I, one of my questions is this. What about testing for COVID-19 of our staff who are unvaccinated?
My.
I feel they shouldn't be tested.
We can't point that out legally.
My motion is not required.
It says right here that we can have, if the staff, if a staff member is not vaccinated, that you can have a requirement that they be tested.
To me, that's like requiring them to be, to be vaccinated, and I don't think that that's right.
So, I guess I just have a question on HIPAA law. So, we got to be careful, you can't, you can't ask somebody if they've been vaccinated or not. You can't ask a student if they've been vaccinated or not. So, if you quarantine somebody, even if they've been vaccinated, they still have to quarantine. Otherwise, you're indirectly letting it slip that the student isn't or is vaccinated. So, that, that was coming from another school district conversation last night. So, I don't know, I mean, this is all happening quickly. So, do we need some guidance?
Jen just told me that, actually, with HIPAA, you can ask, but you don't have to answer.
Okay. Okay. But will everybody know that?
I don't know. So, this, this, this motion doesn't say that you can't wear masks, or you can't be vaccinated, or you can't get tested, it just says, we're not requiring it. That's all it says.
Mm-hmm.
It leaves that up to the individual, to the parents and the employees, to do, do, do what they feel is right for them.
Do we want to add something in there that, you know, it's, you know, we're not going to do this unless it's mandated by the state?
I guess I just would rather leave it as is and vote on it. And if that doesn't pass, we go a different direction.
I guess I don't see what adding unless mandated by the state would change it, really. Because, I mean, if the state's going to mandate it, we don't really have a choice.
We have a choice at that point, right?
That's what I would suggest. Dave and I are on different playing fields in that respect.
Because otherwise, if we don't put it in there, and the state mandates something, we have to resend this motion and make a new motion.
My feeling, my feeling is that we just force them to do what they, what they need to do. If we think we're doing what's right for our kids, then we should do what's right for the kids, regardless of what they say. Now, if they come back and threaten us to take our funding away, and all those kind of things, which they might do, they might not do anything.
Right. But we're taking a different approach than last year, too. We were blanketed by a hotspot in our county. Now, if you look at the local numbers yet, same thing. We have one, maybe, in a small town, and 99% of them are in that hotspot. Should we, should we have the same?
And Leroy and Osterndes aren't even, aren't part of that.
Right. Should we have the same thinking as those people in Rochester, Austin, the Twin Cities? And that's how they make their judgments at the end of the day, with their mandates. So, I think we got to do what's best for our, our situation. That's my thought.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm suggesting as well.
Like I said, I have no problem with not requiring it, but like I said, if, unless it's mandated by the state. So, if we add that in there, then we're covered no matter what. If it's mandated, we're not going to have a choice. We need to do it. Otherwise, MDE's going to come down here, and we're going to have all kinds of issues. But if we don't add it in here, we now then have to resend that motion and make a new motion.
We don't even know what those issues would be, Teresa, that's what I'm saying.
I'm not willing to risk it.
But I don't, we don't even know if there is a risk.
Has, that's, that's part of my question, is should this be better than by Morgan? Because we don't know what the inherent risks are, if they, don't get me wrong, I'm praying to God there's no mandates, we don't got to go through that like we did last year. But what risk are we putting the district at by not knowing these answers before we agree to this?
I'm not sure we're putting them at any risk, but that's.
Especially if there's mandates.
Well, we.
So, I guess if there's a mandate, does the board just discuss that?
Well, like I said, if you put it in here now.
I mean, this would be the policy until it would change, not policy, but practice until it would change.
Correct. But if you add it in there, unless mandated.
And the board would, the board would need to change it at that time.
I'm trying to save us a step.
Right, but I don't, I'm, I see what you're saying, Teresa, but for me, like I'm saying, the hotspot.
I know.
Should we have the same mandate as the hotspot?
I know, but unfortunately, we didn't get that luxury last year. Everyone got blanketed.
I would not feel comfortable ignoring the, the state mandate without talking to legal counsel to make sure that we're not putting ourselves in a, in a bind, you know?
I respect that, yeah.
And that's a bridge we can cross when that comes along.
But that's, I mean, that's basically what I'm saying here, is this is our, our practice until something changes. And then we would change it and address it at that time. Which I think we could do.
Okay, I'm going to go on further here now. So, it says, "The district will not require students or staffs to wear masks, vaccination for COVID-19, testing for COVID-19, contact tracing," which I have a question about that, "or mandatory quarantines of symptom-free individuals."
As an example of that.
No, no, you don't know my question.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Are we mandatorily requiring a quarantine of someone who is testing positive? Or who does have symptoms? And what will those symptoms be? You have to say symptom-free.
It addresses the symptoms down further, where the district will require that you stay home until you're symptom-free for 24 hours.
Okay.
Okay. As, as far as the, the quarant, what, what my thought was on the quarantines of symptom-free individuals, if we have a family that decides to go to Florida for Christmas vacation and comes back, this past year, they were automatically quarantined for two weeks.
Right.
And I don't think that's right.
Right. I get, okay, so that's what that's saying?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, so contact tracing. If we don't do any type of paying attention to that, how will we know the potential? Like, if I have a student, let's say in third grade, and if we don't trace, like, where they sit at lunch, or who they sit by in their classroom, and someone in their classroom has COVID, how do we know what the risk has been?
I don't know how you know what the risk has been, anyway. I mean, they, they could have come in contact with higher kids in the school.
Okay.
It's, it's, if you have symptoms, that's when you're spread, spread the disease.
All right, so?
So, we're addressing the symptoms, you stay home. Common sense. In the past, we've had kids come to school, they threw up in the middle of the night, they seem okay, so then send them to school. I don't think that's the right approach.
One thing down further, it's that, you know, during this time, the student receives their homework, and may have the opportunity to observe. What is, what do you mean by may? They may or may not get to partake online? Because we have it in the handbooks now that we will provide online learning for those kids who are in quarantine, so this contradicts what we just approved in the handbooks.
Why we use the word may, what we put in the handbooks, are, one of our mailings is between the parent, teacher, and student would be the decision of what's best for the student, or what they would, I mean, it'd be, without saying it put in a big, long thing, basically, we're going to be flexible.
Okay.
If, if, a lot of teachers, if they use their cameras, or using Google Classroom, or doing those things, if it's the easiest turn to switch on, absolutely, probably more likely can observe it. If it's something where, you know, in the past, when you're sick and you just missed the day, and we gave you the homework and you came back, I mean, I, trying to, Dave, on that piece, I, I want it a little bit more flexible of, for the teacher to do what's best for the kids, and, you know, by communication with the parent, too.
That makes it flexible, instead of saying, we will provide the opportunity.
Can I just address the last sentence? "The administration will be responsible to prevent any discrimination of anyone who chooses to wear a mask." Can I have it be, "The administration will be responsible to prevent and address any discrimination," period? Because whether it's masking or not masking, sometimes our kids who don't mask get, you know, bullied to parents, I'm sorry to tell you that, but it does kind of happen, vaccinated or even unvaccinated, everybody kind of, so if we could just take out the, "of anyone who chooses to wear a mask," just take that off, and then add, so it's, it'd be, "The administration will be responsible to prevent and address any discrimination."
Okay.
I don't know where or how, but I would like it somewhere in there to say that it is a very acceptable choice to wear a mask. I mean, we're, we're, we're really coming on pretty strong, and I am in agreement, don't get me wrong, I'm in agreement, but I just want to fine-tune it a little bit in that. Okay, so I, we, we do not require them to do it, I agree with that. We do not require vaccination, testing, I'm a little, I kind of wish we were going to be offering some testing, I have to think about that a minute. Mandatory quarantines, I understand that. We respect parents and employees of this district and believe they should make their own decisions regarding the health of themselves and their families, I agree with that. Okay. Somehow, I would like to also include that it is an acceptable choice to wear a mask. I don't know how, but it feels really.
Well, that's what I thought I was kind of doing at the last sentence, that.
But I think if we, I know.
Can't you just?
Jen tore that apart.
Before I lose my thought, because that happens. Right there, you said, read that sentence about respecting the decisions regarding the health of themselves and their families, which would include the wearing of masks? Is it as simple as?
Something as simple as that.
Adding that to that sentence?
The wearing or not wearing.
Because, because we're saying we respect, that's in the same sentence of we respect them not, but also we respect if they choose to wear them?
To choose.
After their families, which would also include the wearing of a mask, or facial.
Or the choice to wear one.
It's really, it's really kind of implied in the whole thing, that it's, you know, that it's.
It's pretty heavy.
Yeah, but I mean, it's.
It's not really implied. I don't feel that it is.
Okay.
I feel, I mean, I'm in agreement with us saying that you don't have to wear one, but I just think we need to make it a little more, like.
Open to those who want to choose to do it.
Open to those who want to, you know, to feel like, I, it's kind of like something I want for my child, and so I feel comfortable sending my child to school wearing a mask. And I believe they have to wear a mask on the school buses.
Yeah, I think so.
I don't think, yeah, yeah. But I mean, I just want it to feel like it's acceptable, and I understand that you think that it's in that last sentence, and I also understand why Jen doesn't want it there, but, and I, and I also get that it's implied in the not required, but it just doesn't feel very friendly to me. But I don't know, I haven't, since we're just looking at it now, I haven't had time to think how it would fit.
Could say something like, "We, we respect and support each family's choice to wear a mask or not wear a mask."
There you go, that sounds good.
Could we, could we, could we do this? Could we go here, "The district will not require students or staff to wear masks, however we," not acceptable, what's the word you said?
Respect.
We respect.
Respect and support.
Yeah, so like, what if we just had said, "The district will not require students or staff to wear a mask, however we support a family's decision," or whatever, "to have their child wear a mask." Then, "The district also will not require vaccinations, dah dah dah, dah 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 dah." What if we address it right in there? What do you think about that?
I think that sounds good.
That'd be fine. That'd be fine.
I just feel better about that. "The district will also not require."
Does somebody have that written down, so we?
No. I lost track.
We'll just take a little bit and see what you want it to sound like, Deb, so we can get it put in there, and we can redo the motion, maybe.
Yes, I have, "The district will not require students or staff to wear masks, and we, and the district respects the decision of families to wear masks, also the vaccination for COVID-19 will be law."
Don't put "also," start a new sentence.
Yeah, I did.
Oh.
Yeah, I got it. I got that as a new sentence.
Also.
Yeah, "Also, the district."
"The district will not require."
I, I think that we could put that sentence of, "We respect the family's choice to wear a mask," right be, right after the other sentence about families making their own, own decisions.
Okay.
Want that to tie in?
Yeah.
Yep, yeah, you can do that, too.
So, do we want to resend the previous motion on the table and reread it now with all the wording changes?
Are we done?
Well, that, too, yeah.
Right. Everybody's, I guess now's the time to get it right.
Everybody.
Chen, do you have any?
I just have one question. About the word mandatory quarantining, being this motion is not supporting mandatory, do we need the word mandatory? Is it just quarantining?
Just not supporting.
Quarantines of symptom-free individuals.
You know what I'm saying?
That's fine.
This is your mandate. Your local mandate is this, what you choose.
Scratch mandatory.
You can take out mandatory.
Okay, that's fine.
Scratch mandatory.
I expected to get this picked apart, so that's good, that's fine.
I mean, you know, you just can't just go with it.
Well, why not? Come on.
You can have these earlier next time.
Well, I've been thinking about it for a while, and I just wrote it up, actually, so.
It's good to have conversation and questions.
That's right.
His poor wife, when he gets home, though, what she's going to have to put up with.
That's right.
Add it to the list, right, Jody?
Just go lay in your pool, you'll be fine.
Oh, if you just, if you guys knew what I had to live with.
Yeah, buying it.
That's actually the opposite of what we were saying.
Dave, you got boots on?
So, any other questions or suggestions? Otherwise.
We got to hear it.
We got to resend the previous motion on the table, though.
Dave made the motion, Tim had the second.
Um, I will resend the previous motion. Make a motion to do that. So, does Tim need to second that?
Yep.
I will second that.
Thanks, Tim. Okay.
You got to vote it out.
All those in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So, the new motion will say, hopefully I'll get this right, Tiffany, you'll have to correct me if I'm wrong. "The Leroy Osterndes School District will be holding in-person classes for our students five days per week for this 2021-2022 school year. The district will not require students or staff to wear masks, vaccination of COVID-19, testing for COVID-19, contact tracing, or quarantines of symptom-free individuals. We respect the parents and employees of this district and believe they should make their own decisions regarding the health of themselves and their families. We respect their decision to send their kids to school with wearing a mask." I don't know if that's the right sentence, but I did. I don't know if that's the right sentence, but I didn't get it written down. However, "The district will require that if students or staff have cold or flu symptoms that they stay home until they are symptom-free for at least 24 hours before returning to school. During this time, a student will receive their homework assignments from their teachers and may have the opportunity to observe their classes online when they are in session. The administration will be responsible to prevent and address any discrimination."
Can I add one more thing? "During this time, a student will receive their homework assignments from their teachers and may have the opportunity to observe and participate."
Okay. I just, okay.
In their classes.
Observe and participate in their classes.
Are we going to offer that?
I'm a teacher.
Are they going to be able to do that?
I didn't think we'd offer that.
I thought they were just going to be able to observe the teacher teaching.
I thought, they actually know that during negotiations, we had a discussion about this, where it's going to be, again, not fully, like, we aren't an online school. So we made that decision, yep, that makes sense, because we're not, and MDE supports that. But we have the discussion of if you are home at a lengthy period of time, you may have to participate in classes.
Okay.
So.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was going to be actually available.
The word "may" gives that flexibility anyway.
Okay, all right, sounds good.
I think we have to do that.
Okay.
Okay. So correcting that, "During this time, a student will receive their homework assignments from their teachers and may have the opportunity to observe and participate in their classes online when they are in session. The administration will be responsible to prevent and address any discrimination."
Should that say to wearing or not wearing a mask? Or just to wearing a mask?
The discrimination?
Yeah, because you said.
Well, I think, but also, I think it ends that discrimination just because this is one big pandemic item, and so some kids are, you know, possibly getting bullied for being vaccinated or not vaccinated. It's becoming political, Republican, Democrat, you know, we want it just all to not be.
Blanket statement.
Yep, yep.
Sort of end it discrimination.
That's all right with you guys?
That works for me.
Okay. All right. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Wait, hold on, one more, one more thing. Are we going to address if there's a mandate? Or are we just going to go with this for now?
Address it at the time the mandate comes out.
And I'll continue, just to ease everyone, too. I'll continue, and I know I overwhelm you, and I know I always need to apologize genuinely for that, for my, all my emails, but I'll continuously forward any MDE emails or CDC emails. I'll continue to send off our weekly Maurer County data. You can choose to do what you want with them, but it's information to share. And I'll continue, too. After tonight, there'll be letters sent to our parents and community at large of what our plan is, once this is decided tonight, and if there's any changes that come about, we'll make sure that's, you know, we're still going to do things such as disinfecting. We're still going to, you know, talk about hand sanitizing. We did that prior to the pandemic. We were talking about that. We just do some more now, like we should have always done.
That's a school's responsibility.
Yeah, we'll continue to do those things, and we'll have outreach to our parents about, you know, communications about those things. We'll continue to do that, for sure.
Do a loud question. What, and I'm asking as a parent, what if our kids are tested positive through another requirement outside of the school? Are parents then required to tell the district that a child is positive and/or would that not? Would we have to feel obligated to call the office and say, "My kid is positive, I'm staying home," or?
Keep them home.
Is that up to them?
Keep them home.
But yes, they should talk, say that they are tested positive, because we have the right to know.
I mean, I want to, I think we always want to say, "We trust everyone until we can't," you know? So we trust our parents that, Axel, if you call me and say, "Hey, Jen, you know what? I think it's just the flu," and I'm going to trust, hey, I believe you that it's the flu. If I find out later it's something else, well, then you and I will have a different relationship. But, you know, at this point, I think we all should trust each other that we're going to tell each other the truth, and sometimes we may not like the truth, but we should do that. You know, if it's a COVID test or positive, feel free to tell us, too. We're surely not going to push you or say, "You know what, that Axel, he's lying." We don't have the time of day for that, and we should be that way, you know? We have to be open to that.
Open and honest between each other. Okay? We have a motion and a second now.
Hey, Tiff, could you send this out to the board and the staff tomorrow, once you get that all typed up, so we know exactly what was approved? Because I'm sure we're going to have questions from the public asking about that.
I'll give Dave a call, do one more readabout. Poor Jody, I call Dave all the time. So yes, I'll call Dave, we'll go through it one more time, and then if we find anything that looks kind of funky, we'll bring it back. We'll bring it back. We can have a three-day meeting.
Yeah, I think it's, I think we got it squared away.
But yes, Cass, I think you're right. What I like to do, parents, just so you're aware, too, before a parent communication goes out, hours before, literally only hours before a communication goes out to our community, I send it off to our staff first, just so they're aware of what parents are going to know. So as Cass is saying, yes, our internal constituency, so our staff, will know first. It makes sense, they hold a contract with us, and we want to respect those individuals that will implement these practices and policies. And then, of course, we send communications out to staff or to parents. So this will come, hopefully, by the end of the week, to parents on Letterhead and through Infinite Campus of what our plans are. That's what a quick turnaround we try to do, anyway.
Okay. Any other questions or before we vote? I think we'll take a roll call vote on this one, as long as it's kind of a hot topic. Deb, you want to start?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
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 Sounds good. Motion carried. Moving on to reports. Staff report comments. Trevor Carrier.
I can help with that one.
Okay.
Trevor would have loved to have been here tonight, but of course, he has football practice. So he did send Erin and I a bunch of notes that he's directed us to read tonight, so I'll just make them real short and sweet. As you can see, I crossed off some of them. I'm going to direct right back at him. Okay, so he has been working on a lot of things in the athletic department, and as you know, with the start of school, it's awful busy for our athletic department, so him and Nikki are cruising through it. So some things there, working on our fall schedules, they're all completed and updated. One little tweak in the volleyball schedule, we had two more games than legally we can have, and so two had to be deleted off the schedule, so that's all taken care of. Departure times with fall schedules, that's all taken care of, too, so that's kind of nice, it's done nice and early like this. Winter schedules, they are completed and uploaded and updated on our school right now, so that's good. All fall coaching hires are complete, fall event workers are scheduled and assigned. I got to tell you, he sent out an email just a few weeks ago to the internal staff about workers, and Erin, would you say within a half hour? It was full. So kudos to our staff for stepping up and always wanting to contribute that way. Many people are aware that the old bushes by the football field have been removed, a new fence has been installed, and of course, the new scoreboard and poles are up, so we're pretty excited about that. We are working on, and Erin can talk more about this, a leadership academy, and so our activities director is part of that, and we want all our coaches and advisors, and Erin continues to update the board on that, and we'll get more into it as the school year continues, but that's kind of fun. Many of you are aware, too, that he asked if he could create a L.O. Cardinal Athletics page on Facebook and Twitter. Keep in mind, there were some there, but they were pretty splintered. Everybody kind of had their own stand alone, and it wasn't very team-like, as we always are preaching in terms of athletics and activities, and so we have now combined it as one, and it's looking really good. Athletic dates, as I said before, we have some great things going on. Fall pitchers are ready. Our first home volleyball game is already on August 26th, and then our football scrimmage, the first one, is at Medillia on August 28th. So folks, that's coming pretty darn quick, pretty darn quick. He also did say he wants to give a huge thank you, well, I won't read it all, but to some people, anyway, but a huge shout out to all the Cardinal coaches. He's been requesting meetings and gatherings, and they are showing up. This is a little bit different for them. They've not done these things before, and they're showing up and doing a really, really good job of, you know, giving him information and providing information, providing support for the district, so hats off to them, too. I think that's it.
Thank you. Principals report, Erin.
All right, I'll start out with the Leadership Academy that we are starting. We had our first Cardinal Leadership Academy with the students and the staff. Basically, we took last year's captains, FFA officers, student council, NHS, students that were in some leadership roles, and we met with them the first week of August. We have a curriculum we follow, teaching them leadership skills, strategies, and really teaching them how to be a leader. You know, we give these students leadership roles, but we don't ever really teach them how to be a leader. So I'm excited for it. We had all the kids, the kids showed up, we fed them breakfast, and we fed them lunch. It was 8:00 a.m. until I think we finished about 3:00 o'clock. What was really awesome was the things we noticed as adults, you'd be surprised if these kids notice the exact same things. Anywhere from building and grounds, to behaviors, to staff, to community, they nailed everything right on the head of everything that we talk about as staff and in the meetings and stuff. They've taken on, they came up with their own, they want to start projects. One of the biggest things, they want to start engaging the community more, which would be their responsibility, and they want to think of ways they can go out and, you know, either us go out to the community or bring community in. So community engagement was talked about. Really, the PR of our building, outside and inside, was a priority, and then really the behaviors of how do you, you know, then you kind of dig down into those things of, you know, how do we as leaders help teachers or coaches with behaviors of other kids? You know, how do you be a peer or something? So it was pretty awesome, it got way deeper than I anticipated for the first one. I thought maybe this was going to be a lot of crickets, and I was going to have to do a lot of talking, but those kids were pretty amazing. And like I said, we started with a small group, because I want to do it right, and I want to build, and the teachers and myself, we're learning as well. This is the first time I've done anything like this, but I just felt it was something not only for the kids, but I think the coaches and advisors are going to learn as well, because really, how many of them have gone through leadership trainings and stuff like that? So my big goal, like I've always said in the past, is, you know, three, four, five years down the road, maybe this is a required class in sixth, ninth, and 11th grade, or it's not just going to be for this special group of kids, it's going to be a school-wide initiative. But we had to start somewhere. I want to do it right, I want to start teaching these kids, but I want it to start growing, not only the kids, but adults. So it was pretty awesome to hear the kids talk and hear their ideas, and, you know, they know it's, they have a clue what's going on. So pretty happy with that. So hopefully, as we move along with this, they've already came up with T-shirt designs, and they want to get signs, and they want to do this. I don't know if we have the budget for what they want to do, but that's the only thing they don't understand right now, is a little money piece, but other than that, it's pretty awesome. And like I said, I see this growing, as we get new captains this year and new officers, we'll just start adding and incorporating. And like I said, my goal in a couple of years is to have this as a normal requirement class for kids as they're going, and I don't know what that grade looks like, if we go down to elementary, middle school, high school, but pretty excited for it. And I think the kids, once they got there and kind of knew what it was all about, was pretty awesome. So I'll keep you guys posted as we move along, and hopefully, you see a lot of their actions, and they follow through with what they're going to do, and they really want to do it. We don't want the adults doing it for them, they're going to really do it. So pretty excited for that. Any questions about kind of what that entails? All right. Master schedule is done. We are still looking for a sixth-grade teacher, but because I'm a master scheduler, no, just by the luck of the draw, our sixth-grade schedule fell into place where the teachers that we needed to put the sixth graders in. Our English teacher had an opening, our science teacher had an opening, and our math teacher all fell right on their study hall or prep, so all of our sixth graders are covered with the proper subject area teachers, so that's worked out well. We'll keep it posted. If we get an early graduate or somebody that applies throughout the year, we'll keep looking. But other than that, it's covered, sixth grade is going to be just fine. So we got that, that's working out good for us. STEM, little movement with the STEM, with the new STEM teacher, we're going to put up in the fax room. We have to keep CNA down in the shop for now. There's some paperwork with Mayo, we're kind of waiting on, I just got an email yesterday, I didn't share with you, Jen, but they just said we're working on the paperwork. I don't know what that means, because in the, because in the spring, it was all gung-ho and go, and I think we're going to get to get the building downtown and get to use it, it's just I don't think they realize that class starts Monday. So we were proactive, we're going to have our own room ready to go. Emily's done a lot of great work, so CNA program will be a goal, might be here for this year. Eventually, the goal is to move that down to the Mayo Clinic building, which I think would be a great partnership for us, Mayo, and RCTC, and then get the STEM down in the shop area and things like that. So it's fallen in place, just maybe a little different area than I planned, but it's still all going to work out just fine. Just a small, fun fact for everybody, the, we have a female FIA teacher that'll be in the girls' locker room this year, and I was informed that that office has not been used since 1986.
No, really?
So hence, that's why we can't find an internet connection in there, and we're struggling with the phone, right? Right, Dylan?
Any cobwebs in there?
So pretty exciting on that. Corey Ronenberg, I think he is, I don't know, she's our new FIA teacher. Excited to have her, but it was interesting, put her in that office of, but Lisa told me today, Lisa told me today that 1986 was the last time somebody used that office, so just a fun fact for you guys, I thought that was pretty hilarious. So, but once again, we're finding space, we're running out of space, which is awesome, but we're finding the space, we're utilizing the space. I'm pretty excited to get this year started, so, man, I probably got a million other things to tell you, but really, we're looking good for the start of the school year. We have a lot of things to do yet, but things are looking good. Staffing is great, coaches are filled, teachers are filled. Great things going on, we just need to find a way to get that stuff out there and do a little bit more PR with ourselves, and be proud of what we got going on here. So everybody's picking up the slack and doing a great job, so pretty proud of everybody around here, so thank you.
Good.
Questions or anything?
Any questions for Erin? All right, thanks, Erin. Superintendent report.
All right, first of all, welcome to Christie. She is our new business manager, so formal welcome. She comes to us from the Winona School District and has years of experience there, but also years of experience in accounting. Is that right?
Yes, so, yeah, so I have over 20 years of experience in accounting. I worked for a social services company in the cities a really long time ago, before my daughter was born, and then came back to Rochester and worked with McNeil's Truck and Manufacturing for a number of years, and then Mayo Clinic for a very long stint, and then went to Winona Area Public Schools, I was there for the last two years, and started with CLA July 6th. So, yes, and now I'm supporting not only you guys, but I have some nonprofits and a construction company and some other, some other various areas, and I'm learning new things, so.
Welcome, we're glad you're here.
Welcome, welcome.
Let's see, as I said earlier, especially to our viewing public, that parent communications will be forthcoming within the next few days, so I know that's a little bit overwhelming to our parents. We surely here at the district office and our board members do not live in ivory towers. We want you to reach out with questions, concerns, communications, whatever it is, so please talk to us. Thank you to the board for supporting the non-affiliated contract. That, too, will be forthcoming to all of you. Like I said earlier, to get some direction from both Director Rayburn and Director Lewison
Like I said earlier, to get some direction from both Director Rayburn and Director Lewison will be great, and we'll have those meetings here coming up, too, once we kind of get moving on this, so be prepared for that. Our audit, as a friendly reminder, will be September 21st through the 23rd. I know that's always tons of fun, well, it is for her, she loves those things, but...so you will be publicly presented with it, I'm assuming in October or November. We like to give them some sort of range there, just because if there's any issues that we can clean up, we have plenty of time to do that. Thank you to our Building and Grounds Committee, we met again tonight, right before the board meeting, and we have done an awful lot in the past year, whether it's, you know, cleaning up the trees and shrubs and all the stuff outside, or, you know, working on our boiler system, the pool area, whatever it is, but a lot going on. So a huge shout out to all those people on that committee. I know it's time-consuming, and there's a lot of research with it, but again, the first year is always the hardest, and, you know, there's a lot of blood, sweat, and tears with it, but it only gets easier, because now we have a platform, so thanks to all those folks. Finally, a formal invite to all the school board members, that we do have our three-day fall in-service coming up. That's August 30th through September 1st. You are welcome to attend any of it or all of it. It's maybe not as exciting as you would hope, but please know...
Oh, it's exciting.
Please know you're welcome to attend. You are welcome to attend.
You're 25?
Yeah. So thank you all. That's all for me tonight.
Okay. Any questions for Jen? Okay, always thank you, Jen. School board committee reports. Anybody have any reports? We'll be updating the board in a closed session here at the end of the meeting, as far as the status of teacher negotiations, so...
Did you hear from Diane?
Yes.
Okay.
Deb and I had ECFE Community Ed last week, so I'll hit Community Ed first. They're hoping to offer this fall the bowling for the K-5 kids, cheer camp, driver's ed, flag football, which is now first through fifth grade, taekwondo, youth volleyball camp, Zuma, and a women's defense class. Leanne will get everything put together here and sent out in the next couple of weeks. And Diane typed up a lovely, I highlighted the main points. ECFE, September 23rd, we're gonna be hosting a book walk on the bike trail. You walk down one side, you read a book, you walk your way back. When they're done, we're gonna set up dinner in the concession stand. Children five and under will be able to pick out two books that Diane got from a literacy grant from Smith. Thursday, October 14th, we're gonna try to do Touch a Truck. Thursday, October 28th, will be the Halloween party, children five and under, their parents, siblings, everyone's welcome to come. The first parent-child class will begin on November 4th. Breakfast with Santa will be December 11th, and normally, we do ECFE nights on Tuesdays. However, with it conflicting with board meetings, we're gonna go ahead and try to change it this year to Thursdays, so if parents like me with little ones want to go, or parents that are here watching the board meeting have the opportunity to go, so we're gonna go ahead and give it a shot and try it on Thursdays. That's all I got for the meeting.
Okay. Anybody else have anything?
For the comment section, I was asked by a couple if we can start posting the information back on Facebook. Before we went to Zoom, when the board got their stuff, we would post something on Facebook that, you know, this coming Tuesdays, the board meeting, I can't remember if we posted the agenda or not, but...
We post everything on our official website.
Correct, but they were wondering if there could be a Facebook post like we usually do, because some people didn't know when the meetings were. I had one person that knew that we were back in person, but they didn't know the public was welcome. So can we, they were wondering if we could go back to, before, we did this before Zoom, we put it on, you know, the school board's meeting is, you know, Tuesday at so-and-so, they were wondering if we could go back to doing that to kind of keep the public more in the loop.
It's doable, isn't it?
Who's in charge of that? Who's in charge of the Facebook?
Me and Dylan can take care of it.
All right. You're fine with that? It's fine with that?
Perfect. Thanks. Problem solved. Nice. All right. Anything else, any other reports from anyone?